Alright, what's up guys? So, uh, for our group session today, we're gonna do post-flop stuff. And thanks to, uh, Sergi, sent me the, uh, sent me a bunch of post-flop hands. I went through a handful of them, obviously there's a 178 of them here. I doubt we'll get through all of them, but, um, you know, a lot of them are pretty good spots. So, thanks for sending those over. And I, I know we actually have some guys in here who don't even play 180s, maybe they're thinking about playing some MTTs. Post-flop play is post-flop play. Um, now granted in MTTs and especially $3 rebuy games, you're gonna be much deeper than you are in, let's say, an 18-man game. So, hey, what's up, John?
Howdy.
Yep, so just, uh, as I was saying, we're gonna go through post-flop play stuff. It's, you know, similar concepts, no matter what game you're playing, obviously you're a little bit deeper, um, in MTTs, obviously, or rebuy, or deep stack games. So, there's some other considerations there, but for the most part, you know, talking about scenarios, figuring out where your goal is, bet sizing, it's all applicable. So, uh, before we actually jump into this, I want to mention a few things that I've said in, in the group chat, maybe some of you read it, some of you haven't. So, moving forward, what I thought was, and just get based upon the feedback from, from everybody else, what I want to do is, um, do these group sessions every single week. I think it's just good, um, get everybody's opinions, picking specific topics, everybody seems to like them, I think it's good material. And especially for recording them, if you miss them, there's gonna be tons of material and resources available to review after. In addition, I mean, I'm fine with doing one-on-one sessions. Um, you know, past several months, actually, it's just been non-stop one-on-one sessions, which is fine. Um, eh, no problem, Pat. Um, but I was talking to people and I thought, what a good, a, a good idea to potentially change things up a bit, and which might be more beneficial for everybody as a whole, is to post full games into here. Now, we used to do this a lot, if you go into here, the handstand review section, there used to be a lot of games where you'd see that from August and June, you know, it's been pretty dead in here. Um, and the reason that happened was because as the group started to get bigger, um, we started to do just a lot more one-on-one sessions, which is fine. But everybody really seemed to like this concept, so what I wanted to try to do, let's see how it works. If you have a game that you want to review, go ahead, start a new topic, and go to attachments, and just attach a full game. Attach a full game, it, it gives you a max size of 128 here, so if you're, if you have a game that's bigger than that, you just have to zip it up, it's really not that difficult, so just zip it up and then attach it that way. Um, but I think that'll be beneficial for everybody, because what I found was, you know, I'm pretty much doing these one-on-one sessions, I'm talking, you know, a lot of the same game types, saying a lot of the same things to each individual person, when in reality, we could either accomplish that in the group session, or by doing video reviews and written reviews on those games, others can view it as well. Um, so I just think it'll provide more collaboration, people can give feedback on there as well, so. Um, that's my thought, you know, if anybody agrees, disagrees, whatever, let me know. Um, and of course, you know, if things, if you really want to do a one-on-one session, things aren't going well, you know, you have specific questions about your hands, let's definitely do a one-on-one session. But, uh, otherwise, let's, let's give this a shot and see how it goes, so. Um, any thoughts one way or the other on that plan, moving forward?
I think it makes sense, saves time too.
That it does, that it does. So, yeah, let's see how it goes, see how it goes. Alright, so for today's sesh, um, like I said, post-flop play. Some of these hands, they're not gonna be, you know, the best hands to go over, a lot of them actually are pretty good, very standard spots. Um, I think, uh, Sergi, what he did was, you just pretty much filtered, but by the time you got to the river, and, um, you didn't go all-in pre-flop, so, good stuff. You know, a lot of, some of these hands may not be, uh, applicable, but others seem to be pretty good, so. You can type in a question in Skype as usual, or, you know, we've only got a handful of people in here, so. Um, anybody wants to make any comments or whatever, just unmute your mic and let's fire away. So, let's, uh, let's get started. So, early stages here, 25-50, oh, and by the way, guys, for the most part, these are, uh, 180-man games, uh, 250, 180 mans. You know, post-flop play to, in a sense, is post-flop play, no matter what you're playing. The players will certainly change, we don't have stats, obviously, so we'll go based upon, you know, how our opponents react and whether we know he's a reg or not. So, we get a, uh, you know, so you ISO, fine. We get a call. Very common scenario here, you know, you do an ISO raise, your stack isn't extremely deep. What's your guys' play here? What do you typically do? Do you check it back? Do you bet?
Well, the point of isolation is to continuation bets, I, I think. If you isolate, you have to continue continuation bets.
Yeah, in general, that, that is my game plan, when I do an ISO raise, I will, uh, I will more often than not be putting a C-bet, because they've already shown weakness. You know, they limped, called, out of position, so I'm happy to take it down. This one's a little interesting, um, okay, there we go. Yeah, this one's a little interesting in that this board definitely hits a lot of his range, we have some outs. You know, even if we're not ahead right now, we could be ahead on the turn, rather than potentially getting check raised off of our hand, that's always the concern. So, when I say, hey, should we C-bet or should we check it back? I will be inclined sometimes to check it back, if it's potentially on a board like this and I have outs. You know, we have a gut shot, we've got it over, not a ton of outs, but outs nonetheless. And on this board, which could potentially hit a lot of his range, but his range could also include a lot of asecs, a lot of pocket pairs that are gonna fold, um. You bet to get two cards, yep, I, I agree with that. I do agree with that as well, if we bet here and get called. So, it's not necessarily about getting called, I really don't mind that, it's the potential being check raised, there's always an option there, uh, or always a chance that that happens. Um, what do you guys think? Would you check it back or C-bet? I'm just, I'm just giving.
Do we know anything about this guy?
We, we know nothing, we'll, we'll assume that he's a random unknown player, because I don't recognize him as a reg unless somebody else does, um. Yeah, it's a $2.50, 180 man, so unless we really identify him as a reg, they're, um, yeah, we'll just assume it's a random guy.
I guess for me, as an unknown, uh, in position, I'm, I might C-bet, I wouldn't just default C-bet half-pot though. Um, I think we could probably C-bet smaller against this guy and still get the same information, without putting it into an uncomfortable spot, and sometimes I feel if, against, well, unknown, you know, I guess it's just defaulty stuff, but C-bet smaller, it makes it less interesting to, for them to check raise, or less profitable just in general. So, if I'm worried about getting check raised, sometimes I'll, I don't know, sometimes I'll do that, but if it's an unknown, I don't necessarily like checking back unless I can assume they're gonna check raise me often.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good point about betting small as well, I, you definitely don't need to go to half-pot here. I mean, the hands we're gonna probably gonna get to fold are those like pocket fours and asecs, and hands that are gonna fold to 150, 170, and they would fold to 260 as well, or, you know, 200. Um, so yeah, I, I definitely agree, you don't even need to go half-pot on this. I would definitely be more inclined to do that, bet, bet a little bit smaller, but definitely C-bet. And if he does just call, uh, it does give us the opportunity to see a turn in river if he checks it back, so. I'd be fine with that. Yeah, I think that's too big. I think that's too big, I mean, that's more than half-pot. Whenever you're making a, a C-bet, you pretty much have to think what you're trying to accomplish. Are you betting for value, or are you betting, you know, simply to take it down? But in accordance with that, you have to figure out, what are we actually getting to fold if that's really our goal? I mean, our, we're happy here with a fold, certainly, so, how much do we have to bet to get a fold? What's he gonna call with? He's gonna call with a king whether you bet 1,000 or 100. Um, jack-ten type of hands he's gonna be calling with, he probably would still call with a queen. So, a lot of those hands, we're probably not gonna be getting to fold. Um, but the hands that we are getting to fold are some pocket pairs that obviously completely missed, asecs type of hands, um, so betting bigger than half-pot really doesn't accomplish much. And he calls. That's a nice card for us. What do you guys think here? When you have nuts, but a little, it's a nice juicy board. Do you bet like 300 or 400? What do you guys think? Opponents aggro, check, let him go on the river. Am I the only one that sometimes gets inclined to just shove all-in on the turn? I agree with betting either small and getting value, I, I'll talk about both sides. I get why everybody's kinda saying, you know, bet 300, bet 200, something like that. Um, because we're obviously gonna get value from a lot of hands doing that, but obviously the question is, are we gonna get max value? Um, and what hands are gonna call 200 that wouldn't call shove, let's say? Let's compare the two, betting small for value, and also shoving, if shoving's a value hand, a value play. Um, on boards like this, when I, if I think that there's a loose, fishy player, and he called our bet on the flop, and the board's pretty, pretty wet here, I would, I'm usually inclined to shove all-in, because I could probably get him to commit his chips before the potential river might give us a scare card, for example. You know, obviously, if a nine comes out, a jack comes out, an ace comes out, even potentially a spade, that might kill some action. Um, and that's what I'm usually afraid of as well, I think that's another consideration you have to make is, are there cards that can come that can kill the action? And therefore, we lose value, I mean, if he does have king-jack, he's getting it all-in at this point. Yeah, maybe he would've check-raised with king-jack on the flop, who knows? Um, hands that probably wouldn't call a shove, but would call a smaller bet would be hands like queen-jack, 10-jack, those types of hands. So, it's definitely a little bit more subjective, you know, we're obviously basing this on unknowns, and the general population of how they typically play, um. Yeah, I mean, obviously we don't have stats, so, and even if we were playing this game, we would, probably wouldn't have stats either. You know, this is only a couple hands in, so it's not like we're gonna have a ton of information that's gonna, uh, I mean, you can look up stats, but again, it's a random guy, you might have like 15 hands on him. You know, five, or up to this point, maybe like just like five hands or something, so it's not gonna be too big of a deal. I can make arguments for both, both ends, um, I think there's so many hands in his range that could potentially call here, that I would be inclined to shove, and have him get his chips in now, before he's afraid to later. That's, I feel like I do that possibly more than most, could be sometimes to a detriment, but, um, what do you guys think? Is there a consensus on what you would do?
What do you think about, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm, I have some games up too, but what do you think about like betting smaller to further commit this guy, considering, you know, we, I guess, have the ace of spades, and with one card to go, we're way ahead of any of his potential queen-x range, that you said he would probably just call the flop, maybe jack-10, maybe queen-jack, stuff like that, which obviously aren't folding, but, I guess, what do you think about?
I'm cool with that, that's what I was saying, I, you know, I'm just, I was just giving a, uh, another way to, like, shoving could potentially be an, an okay play. I'm, I would be fine with betting like 250 here, and giving us like a perfect stack to shovel on the river, and making it so that he would be inclined to cause, um, so I, I'd be fine with that. It's definitely subjective play, like I said.
Yeah, there's a few creative ways I think you can go about it, I'd like to shove too, if I, um, had a little bit more info. Um, but yeah, it's definitely a spot. Whoops, I keep muting myself too fast, get creative.
Um, maybe the thinking players, um, if I assume a guy's a fish, or, I mean, I don't assume they're thinking a whole lot, they're probably looking at their hand, figuring out what's going on, he's 57-7. So, there you go, take it for what it's worth.
Maybe now I shove.
Yeah, I was about to say, probably now I would shove. You definitely, you definitely don't wanna, I don't know, I think somebody might've said, "Check it." You definitely don't wanna check, he's a loose, obviously really loose and passive player, so when they're passive, you wanna do the betting, um, so now you might wanna shove. So, you bet 450, like, here's the thing, you bet 450, and here's why I tend to advocate the shove, maybe you don't wanna do it here, but it's at least something to think about, you know, that you can make some over-shoves once in a while, against these guys. If he's gonna call 450 at this point, I gotta imagine he'd probably call 1,000. You know, if he's just gonna flat 450 here. And then he folds the river, of course, so, who the hell knows what he had, he could have all sorts of crap. Maybe he had a hand like ace-10 as well, you could certainly have that. But, you know, not saying that this play was, was wrong, maybe we, maybe you actually got more value out of him, um, then he, maybe he wouldn't call shove, but another way to think about playing it is to potentially make a, make a shove here. Like, if you, you gotta say to yourself, if he's gonna call 450, would he call another 600? If so, then let's just get it in now, I know you have the nuts at this point. There's also the concern of cards killing the action on the river, which you have to take into consideration, so. Interesting hand right off the bat, um, but it's all about trying to figure out how to get most value. But against those guys that are playing 57-7, those are probably the ones I'm more inclined to actually make those, those over-shoves, which typically come on the turn. You know, we C-bet, they call, we have a good hand, a made hand on a really juicy board, um, and I think there's other hands that can potentially call with, even if it's just a draw, a pair in a draw, let's get him committed now before they miss, so I would just ship it. If, if we have time, I'll find the hand I played the other day on Merge, it was just like a six-max game, but I had a set, the guy called my flop C-bet, the turn came, made the board pretty draw-heavy, and I shipped for like two and a half times the pot, and the guy snapped off with a pair in a draw. So, it's just another consideration. Um, king-jack, simple, simple hand here. Do you guys typically limp behind here, or are you, uh, or are you putting in an ISO rage? Or, I, ISO rage, ISO raise?
Each row raise.
Say that again?
I was just messing, I said each row raise, it means nothing, I was just being a duper, but I like, um, I prefer the aggressive route personally, on the button.
Yeah, I, I agree, in position, I'm fine with raising, the other thing is, I mean, if we had like jack-10 suit or something like that, I'd probably just limp in, try to hit a big hand, in a multi-way pot. King-jack, I'm never too excited to limp in and play in a four or five-way pot. If we hit a jack or king, we could be in trouble. Alright, so there you go, we get a four-way pot anyway. And I think we just have to go with it. This is probably a time I would bet a little bit bigger, so I'm fine with that, unless anybody else isn't. And I'd probably just ship it in and call. Nasty. 56-3, you get all the fun, guys. Alright, sorry about that. What do you think, C-bet? Anybody posted that? Alright, no answers, I'll assume we're fine. Um, let me, let me ask, uh, Sergi, you're, it seems like your standard bet sizes seem to be bigger, much bigger than half-pot, is that, is that always the case? When I have three plus paws, when I have stacks, when I have less, I bet less. Um, I agree to a point that, you know, when the blinds get bigger, pots get bigger, and they represent larger portions of your stack, you don't have to bet so big, you can get away with even 30% sizing. But here, I, I think it's, you really start putting yourself in some awkward spots in general, if your C-betting gets too big, and one thing I like to do, we will, probably won't get into this a ton today, I'm not, well, I'm not sure based upon the hands, but if you ever wanted to double-barrel, when you make a large C-bet, you also make it really awkward to make a double-barrel play if, if, uh, if that's what you wanna do. But on the other hand, I'd like to keep it relatively uniform. Now, if you're playing against a fish, you don't really have to balance your range, you do whatever you think can get the most chips, so I get it. Um, but in general, at this stage, you know, I'm typically betting 140 to 150, so like around half-pot, a little bit less, whether I hit the hand or whether I miss the hand, um, so, two things, don't fall into the trap of betting bigger when you have it, betting smaller when you don't have it, I'm not sure if you do do that, but just making sure. Um, but also in general, if, I'm not sure if you always bet this big when you miss it as well, even in the early stages. Um, because when you start betting bigger as a C-bet, it has to work more frequently to, uh, to be profitable. So, you definitely wanna balance how big your sizing should be, so I would just be a little bit less. Ooh, baby, that makes life a little bit interesting. So now we've got two over cards, eh, what's, one of the overs may not help us here if we hit a queen. Um, straight draw, or gutter, you know, we got a gut shot, we got a flush draw. What do you guys do here? You just ship it in, you give it up, think you're just behind? What do you think?
I don't like it now on the turn. Order blinds? 25-50.
25-50.
I don't know, I personally feel like I'm at the mercy of this bet now with my stack size, and just, I don't really know what I can do that would make too much sense with one card to go, and I guess still, an okay enough stack.
So you just fold it?
Probably, most of the time, unless, I don't know, unless it was, well, this is a freeze-out, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think most of the time I'd probably fold it.
Yeah, I mean, it kinda, like, if this, um, if this was checked to us, I probably would check it back, actually, because that's where we wanna give ourselves a free card potentially, and we could, we have a ton of outs. Um, but given how it was played, I think we gotta just let it go, I agree. And you shipped it. Got anxious, so that doesn't even help us either, that he's got two of the other spades. Oh, but we hit a spade, so, obviously you should've played it that way. But yeah, you know, I, I agree, that you got one more card to go, you're most likely behind. If I told you you were behind, would you get it in? Probably not, so unless you think this is just an outright bluff, you know, which I really don't think people are gonna do that too often on the turn, then you just gotta let it go. Won't get in. Alright, so you open here. Do you guys C-bet, not C-bet? C-bet, C-bet. So, let's say this, okay, we don't have stats, but this guy's sitting here with 10 big blinds and decide to flat out of the blinds, and I don't recognize him as a reg, so we'll assume that he's one of these other loose, potentially passive, fishy players. So, let's make that assumption. So, I don't necessarily take anything out of their range, they can have all sorts of crap, and we have no specific stats or specific hands, so we'll take it for what it's worth. Um, I can never really argue against C-betting. I will just give you another option, way to think about it, just to add into your game. Boards like this lend themselves also to potentially get check-raised on, because people may simply not believe you. You know, if this guy's a real passive player, then that may not be the case, he may not be check-raising you, but if it's more aggressive player, and that's where I like to use my flop aggression percentage, if, if, and take a look at that and see if this guy's check-raised before, if he's just aggressive in general. If he's aggressive in general, you might find yourself getting check-raised on an ultra-dry board like this. If they have pocket, like a pocket pair, like 5, 6, 7s, they're most likely check-raising you. Um, obviously, if he's got like ace-8 or something like that, he's probably gonna be check-raising you. So, on boards like this, I don't mind checking it back in position and doing a delayed C-bet. Um, so the advantages of that are, we check it back, if he checks again, we can go ahead and fire, again, a delayed C-bet, a turn C-bet, whatever you wanna call it, on any card that comes on the turn. And at that point, you wouldn't have to bet very big, I'd probably bet like no more than 400 into that. If people are gonna make moves, they usually make them on the flop, especially with, uh, given the scenario here with the stack sizes and everything. So, they're gonna make moves on the flop, and that's not necessarily on the turn. So, you can typically win these pots a lot on the turn. The disadvantage with it is, is if he leads out the turn, then we obviously have to probably give up if we totally still missed. And we also might give him some outs that he might've folded on the flop, so I get it. So, I'm not saying this is what I would do 100% of the time, you have to do a delayed C-bet here, it's just another way to think about these types of hands, that if you're up against aggressive opponents, don't be afraid to just check it back here, and do a bet on the turn. So, you do C-bet kind of small. Huh, this stack makes it kind of awkward. Um, if he was deeper, I probably would've definitely double-barreled on this card. Checking back's fine. I would probably bet something really, really small here, probably like 300 again, possibly, since he's gone check, check, you know, check-call, check, check again. 600, eh, it's fine. Maybe even a little bit smaller to get him to call, since that's like half his stack. So, he could've had all sorts of crap, who knows what he called with on the flop? Could've been like 5-6 or something like that, um. So, any, any questions, comments about that hand?
Are we just focusing on post-flop stuff? Like, would we normally be opening that spot with those types of stacks?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's a good question as well, I, we, yeah, we're mainly looking at the post-flop stuff. You know, pre-flop, we'll assume that this guy's loose, you know, I always say I don't mind opening up into these guys, especially if they're tighter, uh, with any two cards, because they're gonna play three better fold. If you've got guys that are gonna... If you've got guys that are going to potentially flat and stuff like that, then yeah, this probably isn't the best idea. You want something that probably flops a lot better. So, uh, one second. Would we call a re-ship? Uh, I wouldn't, I don't think I would. I don't think we have the odds to either, really. I mean, obviously it depends on what range you think he's three-bet shoving. Um, you know, so without the stats, it's kind of tough, I mean, unknown, we'll just assume he's loose, a little bit more passive. Um, but yeah, I mean, the question of opening up there, we can definitely question that. But as, as it is, maybe a little bit smaller on the river. Um, okay with leading out here. A limp pot. That doesn't make it very fun. That's fine. Raise it up. C-bet's small there, that's fine. I have no problem continuing to c-bet there. I don't think we need to slow play or anything like that. Now, when this guy limp calls our raise, then calls our c-bet, and we get to this turn, do we keep firing away? Do we play a little more cautiously, thinking he's got a jack? What do you guys think? Anybody opposed? So let's say, should we c-bet, and how much should we c-bet? Thirty-three-six. Yeah, I would be inclined to c-bet, probably. You would bet three-hundred-ish? Why would you bet, why would you go even bigger here? What's the value of betting really bigger, or really bigger? Really big? Alright, so if we're going to c-bet here, what do you guys think? Should we bet bigger? Should we bet smaller to kind of keep him in, keep the, you know, get the value from pocket fours, sixes, sevens, hands like that? Well, sure, anybody that's going to limp call, um, there's definitely going to be a jack potentially in his range, I, I agree. There's also a lot of other hands in his range, it doesn't just have to be a jack. I think we'll find out pretty quickly if he has a jack as well. If we c-bet this. We, you can't treat this guy as a reg. The guy limp called, the guy limp called for a hundred and nine more from middle position. So unless he's, unless he's doing something weird that I don't know, that he, and he's a reg, um, I'm treating him as, again, another loose, fishy player. Well, he's got, sure, he's got jacks, but he's also got threes, fours, fives, sixes, sevens, eights, those types of hands. He's got ace x in his range, he's got all sorts of crap in his range. So I would probably c-bet, uh, yeah, c-bet and then bet again. I don't need, I don't necessarily want to bet big. I don't want to scare him off, I just want to keep those hands in. If we really, I mean, if he check raises, check raises us on the turn, we might have something to think about, it might be tough to still get away versus this guy, but, uh, it'll at least should give you more room for options, so I would probably bet like two hundred. You might be inclined to, against a thirty-three-six guy. And then he fires out a sixty. That is the essence of a blocker bet. Well, that's probably the worst river too for a blocker. Um, do we think an ace is in his range? This, this could be a pocket pair blocker bet? Like he's got sixes, sevens, eights, nines, hands like that, that he's throwing out a blocker bet with? If I know that somebody is, um, if I really feel that it's a blocker bet, which comes from hands that have showdown value but aren't great, then I might raise him here like real small, probably to like one sixty, two hundred, something like that, for value, because I think he's still going to call that. Or not, you don't even need to go to, uh, to two hundred, but, you know, one sixty, something like that, for pure value, based upon what he's playing. What do you guys think here when he does this? I think by the time he, he makes that bet, I think he's got a pocket pair. I don't think he's got an ace. I don't think he's got a jack. I just think he's got a pocket pair. Which again is why I like to bet a little bit, I would at least like to bet the turn. Maybe not three hundred, but two hundred.
I think when you bet the turn too, not only to get value from, from those hands, but, uh, it'll change. He's not likely to lead the river and put you in this stupid little spot.
I, I agree with that as well. Oh, you cheater, I didn't even look at the mark green, alright, let's get that out of here, now you'll never know. Um, alright, so let's, we'll go here, I, I would probably put in a little bit of raise, a little, little raise there. So he's got tens. Interesting hand to limp with, but for, there you go, you know, it just tells you what type of guys we're up against, so. Uh, but I think a little bit of mis-value there on the turn, and like John said, you know, you put yourself in kind of these awkward river decisions when you check the turn, so I would have bet small there. Or at least bet whether it was small or around half pot. Um, anybody doing anything with king, queen here other than limping? Would you raise? Ship it? What did you guys do? So we'll talk about some pre-flop stuff. He's forty-six-four. So Pat, you said you would two-point. Wait, are we talking about this hand? You would raise if limpers are reg? Is there any reg that's limping king, queen from the hijack? At fifty-one-hundred? Alright, so who limps, who raises? And if you raise, how much? Two-ninety? I have slightly a different approach on these types of hands. Um, I agree we're a little bit too deep to shove. You know, I always use that if you're always trying to figure out what, you know, how deep you should shove with limpers and annies, whatever. You use the twenty percent rule, if the pot's twenty percent or more of your stack, you can shove it all in. Obviously that's not always the case, but it's not a bad rule of thumb. So here, you know, twenty percent would be like three-sixty, we're at a pot of two-fifty, so we're not there yet. So shoving might not be the best option. Um, I don't think it's an awful option, given that he, he's limping just a ton of different hands. I personally think that when you raise to two-fifty, two-ninety out of position, you get in some really awkward spots. Um, Pat, I don't think a forty-six-four guy is going to be folding to seventy-five percent of c-bets. Some may, some, some are just calling stations. Here's a, again, do you have to display every single time? No, another play to think about. We actually talked about this during the last group session, I think. Raising an amount that he might call, but then will allow us to, to ship or pretty much get it all in on any flop. Now, we might be a little bit too deep to do that, but let's figure it out. Um, let's say we raise to like five-hundred. So we raise to five-hundred, he calls five-hundred, there's eleven-hundred in the pot, we got thirteen, thirteen-hundred left behind. Fold the c-bet at seventy-five, four hands. Yeah, so you don't know, so, you know, you may not have a lot of hands. In a perfect world, you have c-betting stats, but against fishy guys who you've, you've never seen before, um, you may not have that information. I usually like to bet bigger pre-flop, have them potentially call, and then ship a lot of, a lot of flops. Because I don't necessarily want to get into too many out-of-position against loose calling stations, loose passive players who might be calling stations. Um, and leaving myself with some awkward stacks, so raising to like two-fifty to two-ninety, and then he calls, and then we c-bet and we miss, and then, um, and then he calls. It creates very, very awkward scenario. Yeah, if you had a, a perfect scenario where the guy, you, you see a guy's folded to a c-bet ten out of ten times, sure, go ahead and just bet three-hundred, have him call. Um, I typically like to make an out-of-position play where I bet like five or six hundred, which might seem ridiculous, but again, we're playing against fish. They might actually call that, and sometimes they do. And then they fold on the flop. It's actually a half decent, um, what if he pops us? It kind of gets, uh, it gets pretty interesting, that's, that's an issue. I'm not too concerned about it, to be honest with you, with a guy that's limping that much. And again, it's not I'm saying that it has to be your play every single time. If we were a little bit shorter, I actually probably would like that play a little bit more. Maybe more like fifteen-hundred? If we had like fifteen-hundred, I'd probably make that play. So there's some risk to it, I'm not, you know, every play's not going to be perfect, just like I don't think raising to three-hundred, because I'll say, okay, what if we c-bet and we miss? Do we just start giving up? It just creates a very awkward spot. But let's just take a look at it as the hand's played out, so you do limp in, maybe a little bit passive there, and as it's played, we'll probably just be checking it around. So can't say too much about that, but I like when I'm out of position, raising bigger, getting them to call, and then trying to get it in on a lot of flops. Yeah, I think your hands is too strong here, in general. If you were at like twenty-five-fifty, I would say go ahead and just limp in, that's fine. Pots are kind of valuable at this point with the, with the limper and the blinds. Um, alright, so what do you guys think here? Multi-weight pot, we got one guy in position on us. Do you guys c-bet, do you check? Looks like we got an over card, we got a double gutter. What do you guys think? C-bet or check? It's our vote. It's an interesting hand. The guy here is kind of short, I don't mind getting it all in against him. I, I mean, in a multi-weight, we're in a multi-weight pot here, this board definitely hits a lot of the range, we've got some outs. I will typically, um, what do we say, or c-bet, c-bet? So let me look at stack sizes here, so if we c-bet and this guy calls, I'm probably, we're probably going to ship any flop or any turn. If we c-bet and this guy calls, we give ourselves, eh, we might actually get to the river by checking it back on the turn. So I don't think a c-bet's bad. If, if we had two guys out of position on, or that had position on us, I'd probably do a, a check, or maybe do, do a check raise. Because if we c-bet and somebody calls us, and then we miss on the turn, and we're out of position, it gets kind of nasty. But with his stack size, it doesn't matter too, too much. That's pretty committing. I mean, I, I, my, my usual play here would probably be more of like a check raise. Because we have outs, we could either win it right there, we have outs if we're called. So if I have, if I'm potentially out of position and I have outs, instead of c-betting potentially get called, I'll c-bet and do, or I'll check and do a check raise. Um, and then we just got to ship. Eh, we could probably just, with the nuts there, I'd probably actually just check it. Make sure he gets it in. But yeah, uh, so I think you, you might be getting a little bit of trouble with your, uh, your big c-bets, especially in a multi-weight pot here where we just have outs. Not a huge fan of the sizing. See, I'm, I see, the thing is, I'm not concerned about the guy on the button really, at this point. See, I, I don't think I would c-bet, that's the thing. I personally would do a check, like a check raise. Uh, I'm sorry, hold on. Hold on, I kind of confused myself with the people that are in position and out of position. I keep thinking that this guy has position on us, but he's in the blinds. Yeah, so he already checked, I'm sorry. So yeah, I would probably bet in like, again, the half pot range. Something like that. We're going to probably get it all in against him. Um, and then we could see essentially how he reacts, I just don't like to go that big. I'm fine with ISO in here. This is a flop that I'm most likely checking back. This is a flop that I'm most likely checking back. Probably just call. Anybody doing anything different here? Or just go to the next hand? Uh, just check it down, I don't think this is one of those hands. Min-raising, I guess is okay, depending on stats of this guy. Um, wouldn't mind if you just shipped it all in. If you've got some like really loose players here, this guy was a loose player, I would just ship this all in. I guess, can we not? I guess probably just hit the call. Um, betting's fine, I'd probably actually bet as small as possible there. Keep him in. See what else we got? I'm okay with the c-bet at the pocket sevens, I would bet really, really small. If you wanted to check it back and bet the turn, you could, but I don't mind c-betting the sevens, it's just really small. Yeah, like 12, I think I would say like 1200 even. Two pair, I just lead out here, good. Just keep firing away, fine. That ace sucks, check it back, good. From the short guy, the other guy had a deep stack. The other guy, if we go back, you're talking about the sevens? Oh, he raising to get a three-bet from, yeah, I mean, I would just ship that all in. I mean, I don't think raising, there's not a problem with it really, but I would probably just ship it all in pre. So that's fine. Uh, we did that hand. Um, so we raise, the short stack decides to do some type of ridiculous min-raise. When this happens, just shove this all in. I wouldn't even hesitate. Don't bet like 350, anything like that, don't get cute with these types of guys, just shove it all in. And he did bet 360. There's, yeah, don't, just, these guys, they're gonna get it all in, just shove it all in. Don't be afraid, these actually look, these types of plays look stronger than shoving it all in. So he wants to three-bet you with a short stack, let him get it all in. And then that kinda sucks, I'm fine with checking it back. Not that I'm scared of a king, but what hands are we gonna get value from? Fine, just shove, but regardless of this hand, shove this all in, once he does that. Make life easy. Let them get committed. Um, you could c-bet, you just wanna make sure that guy gets it all, well, you could check call, yeah, that's fine. No, it's never about folding, it's about getting value. So we got jack-ten suited here. Um, I don't think I would open here if you do. Against the potential, that's probably a pretty loose table. Yeah, for what it's worth, I don't, I don't think I open this pre. But as it is. Got two overs and a straight draw, early stages. Call, fine. Um, what do you guys do here? I'll be honest, I'm getting kinda concerned about this hand now. I know we, I guess we have straight draw and a pair here, but early stages, I'm not gonna get too overzealous here, like I said, I wouldn't have played jack-ten from this position. But I think we just have to get away from this. This board got pretty nasty pretty quickly. So, so that's alright, so we'll talk about the spot. So first, especially if this table's loose, there's no, you're not gonna get a ton of value by opening here and playing potentially out of position. Um, in this spot, could you raise? Sure. It's a pretty nasty spot. Calling's fine, just, I like to play it a little more conservatively early on. Once he fires a double barrel, I would probably just fold. Once he bets that, you just have to get out of the way. Yeah, so, people don't bluff a whole lot with three barrels. I mean, if they do, good for them, but it's not gonna happen a whole lot in a sit-and-go. So, if you didn't fold here, you gotta fold here. Um, I'm actually okay with checking back there. Now I would definitely bet. I mean, again, could you, you're gonna jam pre? Oh, I didn't realize the stack size, uh, yeah, I would jam pre. I guess the question is, why didn't we jam pre? Honestly, I didn't even realize it. Um, let's go back to yeah, this has to be a shove pre-flop. I don't like making this play a lot because many times it looks like you're trying to induce, even from like pocket, like, I see people do this with pocket aces, pocket kings. I would just play it like I had any other old hand that I would shove. So, you probably got actually a little extra value out of potentially, but probably just shove pre. So thanks for stopping me there, I didn't realize. Yeah, if anybody does that, if anybody min-raises with 10 or 9 big blinds against me, I just assume they're trying to induce. Um, here I would, uh, I would ISO bigger with ace-king. I would probably go to like 350. One, I wanna make sure I get into an isolated pot. Two, I wanna try to get as many chips of his committed as possible pre, so that we can look to get it in on the flop, or close to it. And, you know, this is kind of small, these guys might come along as well. So we have to be careful of that. And we have a really good hand, so we wanna make sure we get isolated. Eh, it's kinda nasty. Good, definitely get it in there, I wouldn't call. But getting back, I would probably again make this like 350, 400, so that when he has to call that, the pot's gonna be close to 1,000, and we can ship any flop. That's my usual play there. Getting into post-flop battles with these awkward stacks, sometimes you're gonna make the right decision, sometimes you're gonna make the wrong decision, it gets really, really messy sometimes. Um, we'll just assume this is fine for right now. No, we're gonna shove any flop. If the pot's bigger. Alright, so we get called. Yeah, he acts first, but it's, it's not your ideal stop-and-go situation. People do stop-and-goes when they're in the blinds, you raise, they call, and then ship any flop. So it's not exactly the same type of scenario where somebody's gonna likely do a stop-and-go. But I would make it bigger pre, so that I would call a lot of ships on the flop. Well, remember, what I'm saying is, we're betting big enough pre, so that the pot's big enough, so that we can shove all in effectively any flop. Because we say, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna miss 2/3 of the time, so we get them to call pre, we get that value, and then we essentially ship like a pot-sized bet on the flop, or close to it, then there's gonna be tons of value to doing that. I do that play all the time, it works wonders. Against fish. Um, yeah, so the common theme here is, I would say, just be careful with your c-betting sizes. You don't need to go so big. Because here's the thing, this is a pretty good scenario to do a, uh, a double barrel here, to represent the jack, like if he had fours or, you know, straight draw, something like that. By betting big, it makes a double barrel really awkward, so I would probably just go like 250 on this type of board. 225, something like that. And then the pot's smaller, and then that way I can go like 400 on the turn, or something like that. So by betting big on the flops, not only are you getting hurt when somebody calls you when you totally miss, it's preventing you from doing any type of double barrel plays. Which, this could have been a pretty good scenario to do it. Representing the jack. I would c-bet here. That's fine. Um, I would check here, and let's give ourselves some outs. And just go out of the way, fine. Again, this could be a spot, if you wanted to do, if this was an aggressive player, you wanted to do a, uh, delayed c-bet, that'd be fine. C-betting there is fine as well, I would c-bet no more than like 650. Definitely bet this board, good. And then just, obviously we can't do anything there, so that's delightful. Um, so here, real quick, obviously you've got deuce seven, how much can we really do? I wouldn't shove this all in here. Right, cause what's gonna happen is you're gonna shove all in, you're gonna get a call, and you're gonna get a call. Wait for the flop to come, then shove any flop. That way, if somebody totally missed, they might not, you might actually have some extra fold equity there and get people to fold. So don't shove pre here, just because we know you're committed, you know you're committed, that doesn't matter. So just wait for the flop and, you know, shove it all in on that flop. You know, if they both have small pocket pairs, then you might actually get a fold. So you have queen-jack, so he's probably not gonna fold anyway, but there's extra few times where it might work. Same thing, just shove any flop. Depending on the player, you could three-bet. Wouldn't mind it. Isn't that fun? What I would do here is, I'm trying to think about it, my initial reaction is to do like a blocker bet, of like 150 or something like that. If he's got a queen, he's gonna raise. You know, the question is, do you feel compelled to turn your hand into a bluff catcher if he bets like 250, 300? And you wanna call with your set? So this is another option to think about, is put in like 150. He might actually call that with hands like king-jack or something like that. If he's got a queen, you'll find out pretty damn quickly. And obviously, we're not calling that. It's a, it's a fine option to check. I'm just saying, as a, you could throw in a blocker bet there with a set. If he doesn't actually have the queen, you might get calls from worse hands. If he has the queen, uh, you like the blocking bet and fold? Um, yeah, I would absolutely fold to a jam if we make a blocker bet. I'm never turning my hand into a bluff catcher there, and I, I don't like to make crying calls or anything like that. Obviously, when he shoves, we can make an easy decision here, but, uh, but when he bets 300 on the, on the river, what are you doing? Are you turning your hand into a bluff catcher and then calling off 300? Cause you think, cause he might be bluffing? Or hope that he's bluffing? Cause that's essentially what you've done, is turned your hand into a bluff catcher. Which I don't like, I think that gets too expensive when we're wrong. So, I usually, I, I mean, I probably do this less than most, where I turn my, I, I take the more passive route. I'm usually looking to put in, do the blocker bet rather than check call. I'll make, I'll bet like 150 here. And then see how he wants to play that. If he's got a king, he's gonna call, so we get value. If he's got two pair, he's gonna call, we get value. If he's got a queen, he's gonna raise, we can get out of the way. It costs us 150 rather than potentially 300 or something like that. And just c-bet, fine. I don't think you need to go so big. If he's doing this with spades or a king, just bet at like 250, something like that. Should get the job done. I think you gotta shove at this point. I mean, yeah, if he's got spades, he's not gonna call, but if he's got a worse ace, a king, he's gonna call you. Yeah, they say, good for him. Uh, I think you gotta c-bet at one of these points. Either do a delayed one. Just go out of the way. Really don't like to open 13 big blinds and yeah, you could shove here. I'm kinda just getting to the post-flop play, I'm not really paying attention. You could shove here, you could min-raise, if the players to our left were ultra, ultra loose. Um, I'm never folding here, you could just shove here. Sometimes I like to raise there to induce if people might get aggressive. Shoving's perfectly fine. So nothing here. Again, it's fine to do this as long as you ship any flop. That'd pretty much be my goal, is to ship any flop here. You could shove all in if you want it. You have to shove, good. This is, this open is dependent upon the table, there are times where I would just fold that. But let's just, we'll take it for what it is. That's interesting. Oh my gosh. That's certainly interesting that he called with fours there. Um, it's okay, uh, I would rather do this from the button, I don't even mind limping. If this, again, if it's a really loose table, I'm not inclined to necessarily put in a, even an isolation raise from there. That's fine. That's fine. You could have bet small on the river, by the way. If he's got a jack, hold, eh, maybe if you don't wanna put yourself in that spot, I get it. Thinking he's not gonna call too much there, so that's alright. Um... You know, I, I, I would probably c-bet. I would still c-bet, I know this board's kind of, kinda wet, I, I would still probably c-bet. Definitely bet the turn. So if you don't wanna c-bet there, that's fine, but he just went check-check, just look to take down this pot now, don't give him potentially six more outs, you know, to hit his, hit his cards, um... So just bet like three hundred here, take it down. But I think you need to c-bet the flop there. Uh, what happened here? So we got a limp pot, fine. Alright, so we open here. That's interesting. Played the queens that way. Yeah, just keep firing away, your flush is pretty disguised. You know, heads up, I would just keep betting. What do you end up having? You don't have to bet big, just keep betting. Let's see, overall, the takeaway from this game, from these hands is, you know, now we're getting some hands that, uh... We'll talk about this one in a second. Uh, the takeaway from this game is, in general, I'd be c-betting smaller. You're c-betting very big on, in every single spot we've seen. So what I would say is, keep it to about forty, fifty percent. There are times to go bigger. You have a made hand, possibly multi-way on a pretty, uh, you know, draw-heavy board, and you have, you know, let's say you have pocket aces on like an eight, nine, ten board, or something like that. Yeah, go ahead, bet bigger, fine. There's, because there's other hands you get called by. Um... And there's times where you could bet really small. You know, the flop comes ace-nine-deuce, you're in position, the guy checks to you, you don't even need to bet half-pot or sixty percent to, um, to represent the ace. Think about what he could potentially call with. That's what you always have to think about, is what's he gonna call with, what's our goal? What are the hands he's calling with, what are the hands he's folding? If I bet smaller, does that still accomplish my goal? And many times, it's, the answer's yes. Whether you hit or, or miss, you know, you get value by betting smaller, um... Question here is, do we limp or ISO? Who limps here, who ISO raises? Yeah, I, I think the value with pocket sevens here, in the early stages is, let's see a multi-way pot, let's see it in position, fine, cheaply. Let's try to hit a set, and again, a multi-way pot, and, and try to stack somebody. So I don't think there's as much value to raising and then taking down the pot that way. And you're not gonna like many flops either, um... Interesting that he leads. I would probably... Eh, would you guys raise here? Maybe raise small, like two fifty-ish, two seventy-five? I think that's probably my play. See, the call, my concern with the call is, this guy could potentially call, I mean, who knows what he's got? There's guys that will just call with overcards. Five-four, interesting. I personally like to raise a little bit smaller. I don't necessarily wanna check it, to, to check to see what he's got. If he has overcards, I wanna make him pay for it. If he's got a smaller pocket pair, I want him to pay for it. And again, you know, what I'm saying is, is not a hundred percent correct, I mean... Uh, it's not like the way that you have to play, there's a lot of, you know, different ways to play post-flop to get value. I think my goal in doing this is just, potentially maybe give some other plays that either you haven't thought of, maybe, like for example, out of position, raising big, get somebody to call, so you can shove any flop, rather than put yourself in some really awkward post-flop scenarios out of position. Making some turnover shoves when you have a made hand on a draw-heavy board against a fish. Don't be afraid to shove all in before the river might make a really tricky river decision or kill the action. Doing a delayed c-bet. Um, again, I think this is way too big. You know, you could even just limp in here if you want it, but fine, you raise. Just bet half-pot. Don't scare anybody off. So we'll go a couple more hands, see what we got. Lead out's fine. Again, really dry board, there's no reason to bet big. What happened, what? Uh, the guy had an awful hand, he didn't even have anything. The guy had like five-six. Yeah, four-five, something like that. Um, just bet small here, again, like one forty. I would start to get careful. See, here's where I think you're getting to some really tricky spots, is because even by betting like twenty or thirty more, that escalates the pot for all future streets, and makes your stack a little bit shorter and a little bit more committed. So... That's the thing to be careful about. See, I like that you bet smaller here, but I think that should have been done on the flop. Oops, what the hell happened there? It's fine. I would probably just limp in here. Raising's fine, I guess we did that with king-jack. Sometimes with suited connecting type of cards, I like to, uh, see a multi-way. Depending on the table, but we'll just take it for what it's worth. There's times to play tight, there's times to play aggressive. Yeah, see, this is the board I was talking about before. I guess he could call with a flush draw, but we don't need to bet so big to represent the ace. So... One thirty? One forty, something like that? So we didn't get to say it. Eh, for anybody that's in that other stable, there's Marty Party, sure you guys remember him. If, uh, Owen's in this, is Owen in here? That's their stable. This guy pretty much screwed them. Alright, so, wait, hold on, what's this? Um, you could just ship this all in. I would just shove this all in. But again, we'll take it for what it's worth. Alright, so my rule of thumb here is, you know, we'll say, forget the all-in, you know, we should have done that pre. When somebody donks out for half-pot or more, um... I assume that they have the hand. Just give up here. If he would have bet like two hundred, yeah, go ahead and raise. If somebody bets less than half-pot, I will typically raise. So... I don't necessarily like the, uh, the shove over the top, cause I, I believe that he has it here. Alright, let's do one more hand and then we'll discuss. But yeah, back to our last hand, that should have been a shove pre. I would probably actually bet here. There's enough of a side pot to take down. Yeah, you could c-bet the flop, or you could bet on the turn. Do one or the other. Alright, so... So let's, um, let's end it there for right now. Um, we got through a lot of different hands, we got through about fifty hands. So any questions on that? I mean, going through post-flop stuff is definitely subjective, knowing stats of players is always helpful. For the most part, I think we dealt with some pretty loose, fishy players, guys that are limp calling, flattening our, our opens, stuff like that. Um, you know, here's what I'll say about it, you know, sometimes there's not the perfect way to play. General considerations that I make are the following. One, let's just do the donk betting, like, cause we just dealt with that. If somebody donk bets half-pot or more, I give him credit for the hand. It's not always the case, I know it's not every player. I'll give him credit for the hand, and if I miss, give up. If they do it, you know, usually like a third of the pot or something like that, that's usually a weak hand, and I'll raise it. Um, if there's boards that I think I might get check-raised on, like let's say we have king-queen, and the flop comes seven-four-deuce. And it's an ultra-dry board, I'm in position, I might check that back. You know, again, is c-betting wrong? Maybe not, but I always try to figure out what the path of least resistance is, and if I think of delayed c-bet in those spots, if I think I'm gonna get check-raised by a lot of pocket pairs and a lot of, uh, even, even ace-high hands, we can often take it down on the, on the turn. So, you can add that play in there, and I did a video on that as well, um, that should be in the forum, if it's not, I'll get it in there, um... What else, what else? Other things about post-flop play, what I would say about this stuff is, about th- these particular hands, yeah, the c-bet size, I was just about to say that. Just, let's just say your default is fifty percent. Just make that your default, I think that'll help you right away, um... But there are times you can go bigger, and there's times you can go smaller. There was that ace-high board, I think it was this hand. There was this hand, you don't need to bet any more than a hundred and forty here, a hundred and thirty, to represent that ace. If he's got, if he's got a flush draw, if he's got an ace, he's not gonna fold no matter what you bet. So just bet smaller to accomplish your goal. Um, and accordingly, that'll allow you to make it, uh, to double barrel as well. You don't always have to give up on the flop if you get called, so you can double barrel. Um, what else, what else? And if anybody hasn't seen, I did a video on some post-flop play. It talks about double-barreling, when to do it, when not to do it, when not to triple-barrel. You know, the delayed c-bet. If anybody hasn't seen that and they think it'd be helpful, I could send that over to you, or I'll put it in the forum. But, um, so any questions? There were definitely a lot of different hands near tricky hands, we differed opinions on, that's, I think it's been really helpful, so... Any questions, comments, suggestions?